Hey everybody, it's Bunny Pounds with Christians Engaged. We are so excited for another podcast, a conversation with Christians engaged. Today, we are going to talk about city government. We're going to talk about voting in every election, how important local and city government is. But I am super excited because we're also doing a series on courageous leaders. And I have one of our board members here, Jamie McCain. Jamie's walked with us since the beginning of Christians engaged. She served in city council in Cedar Hill for a long time. I love Jamie because she is an executive pastor with her husband Adam at Hill City in Cedar Hill. But God really enthusiastic about getting involved in her city. So Jamie, I am super excited to talk to you about everything city today.
Thank you Bunny, I'm so excited to be here. And yes, city government is one of my favorite topics in the world. So I can't wait to talk about it today.
There's so many people that are just trying to figure out what do I do? And there's so many problems, right? In America, in our communities. And for a lot of people, city government could be a really good fit. You know, whether it's little councils or committees or you know, park and recreation, whatever that is, that could be a really good fit for a lot of people. So I want to really hit your story, which we haven't done in a real concentrated effort. But in 2005, you all started your church, Church on the Hill, which is now Church Hill City. So you guys launched that. Adam has been, you know, the executive director at Christ for the Nations for years. Now the provost at Christ for the Nations. And so you guys launched that church. Tell us a little bit about that and then, you know, work into your beginning story of being a busy pastor and pastor's wife and like launching into city government. What in the world?
Absolutely, it all worked out. You know, we had been in full-time ministry really our whole adult lives. And really, our impact was more national and international. And many times we looked up and we really weren't even affecting the city that we were a part of. We met pastors that even chose to live far away from their church because they didn't want to run into people at the grocery store. They didn't want to kind of get in amongst the sheep, so to speak. And so in 2005, when we launched Church on the Hill, we really were kind of done with pulpit-driven ministry. And we really wanted to figure out what it looked like to do things a little differently. And so we really didn't even have a traditional Sunday service. We were more of a house church. We just began to serve and love, pray for the needs of our neighbors, those that we would meet here and there, pick up trash, be a part of things that were going on. And people began to say, you know, I haven't met Christians recently that really cared. One person who said, you know, I'm an agnostic and I see money going to other nations, which we of course think is wonderful as well. He said, but I am impressed to see people wanting to invest right where we are and right where we live. So that was our mission and calling for that season. And in doing that, I began to learn there were so many ways to get involved that I had no idea. I didn't know there were groups of citizens that planned the programming in a downtown area or made decisions about what kind of parks we were going to have, or even made decisions about the businesses that were going to come into our city. And so it was fascinating that I could take my biblical values that I lived by every day and help to transform the city that we were a part of. I met so many other Christians that were already doing it. And we just began to jump right in and say, what kind of city do we want to live in? And then what is God's plan for our communities and for the surrounding communities? And that just began to grow. And people said, have you gotten on a board? Have you considered that? And I hadn't. So God was a part of the downtown board, downtown programming, nothing more fun than a downtown area.
Wow, so I didn't put it together that, you know, I love the idea of church planting because that's when really we see growth in the Christian movement is when people are actively building a new church, actively building a new community. And so that you guys start doing service projects and thinking, how do we grow the church? How do we reach out to the community? And that's a natural influx that all of a sudden you're getting involved in city government. I mean, that's crazy.
I think people may not realize when you're a nonprofit, you're not paying taxes. And so for someone whose job is to pay for the street repairs and pay for the fire and pay for the police, many times city government can struggle to see the value of a nonprofit that's not helping with that tax burden. So we felt like as believers, we had the opportunity to show people the value that churches bring. So many churches were already doing it, but we were able to partner with other churches that had been in the community for over 140 years and even highlight what God had been doing and just kind of bring fresh life to things that were already going on.
That's an interesting thing for us to think about in our local churches. And even think about how government officials in our city might see churches not carrying that tax burden, right? But there's so many things that we can contribute to, whether it's homelessness, foster care children, you know, cleanup of the city. You guys even started like an art festival.
We did, we realized that what was missing was actually just the opportunity to do life together. And that was, we thought, how much fun? So we partnered with an arts organization that wanted to bring about change. And they had contributed to seeing wells dug and things like that. And I said, what if your project was the revitalization of a downtown area? And so we began to bring Christian artists, whether that was painters, musicians and potters and everything to the downtown area. And people said, this is, this is so much fun. They knew it was a family-friendly opportunity. Because any, many of us, we want to live in a family-friendly community when we're raising our children. Even those that may want to go do something different, they tend to go to a different community to do that. But where we sleep and where we live, we want it to be safe, we want it to be clean. And we want it to be a place that people want to be. So it wasn't long before Dallas Morning News, the local newspaper, named our downtown the one of the hippest places for young adults, which was, which was funny because it hadn't been just a few years earlier. But as a result, people begin to come, they begin to buy houses, they begin to fix up houses, they begin to invest, which enhance the quality of life for everybody there.
Well, and for those of you around America, Cedar Hill is like South Dallas, South Dallas County. So you have like downtown, then you've got like a southern part that's sometimes a little more impoverished. And then you've got these other suburbs and Cedar Hills down there. And so you get this sprawl coming from the cities, but also, you know, it's just like a little, you know, suburb kind of community with little, I love your downtown, it's just great.
And if we give up on our communities, then the sprawl will just move past us. So we have to continue to invest, we have to shop locally, buy locally, pray for our local business owners. And we want them to flourish because when they flourish, we flourish. And we see God's hand move and we see the prosperity that comes to that area.
Well, and one of your former city council colleagues also started a coffee house down there that's now gone into multiple communities now. So you never know where ideas are going to come. So you decide to run for city council. How did you and your husband make that decision? Again, you had, your kids were younger at that point, you're running a church. Why did that seem like that should be a priority in your life at that point?
What was interesting is at that point in our lives, Adam and I were actually traveling a good bit. We were doing marriage seminars, we were speaking all over the nation. Our two kids were getting older and we really thought our influence was going to be national. And then all of a sudden, God sends us a surprise. He sends us a third child and it really shook my world. Surprise! We had, our others were a little bit older and we thought we were kind of moved past that. And for a minute, I thought, what am I gonna do? I don't, I don't want to leave my kids home with a nanny. It wasn't the choice that I wanted to make in that moment. And I thought, you know what? If I'm going to be home more, then home is where I'm going to invest. And so I just began to say, Lord, what do you have for me right here, right now? And that's when I began to turn my focus locally. Everywhere I went, I was, had this adorable toddler on my hip. So she was my, you know, my campaign secret because she was just so much fun. And my kids, and so we were in the schools, we were in the PTAs, we were a part of what was going on. It was very easy to then have those conversations that says, I love this city, I believe in this city. Would you believe in me? As we begin to see change and see things, see things move forward. So I've been a pastor's wife since I was 19 years old. Typically not an area where there's a lot of competition and campaigning. So, well, that may be debatable, right?
There's politics in our local churches.
Definitely, so I knew how to talk to people, but it was really fun to say, wait a second, only a small percentage of people vote. So all I have to do is get that number of people to give me a chance? And I get to sit in a seat that only seven people sit in, in our city, and make decisions about nudity laws, about alcohol rules, about big decisions, some of them which are moral decisions. And it's important that those seven people understand that the decisions they make will have ramifications for generations to come. And so I just couldn't pass up the opportunity to try. And I ended up winning by a landslide. My first three elections actually was, was, was some of the winningest elections in the history of the city, which was a lot of fun. And I thought, this is great, I really enjoy this. And I enjoyed getting out and meeting people, talking to people and together hearing what they saw as a need that I didn't even know about because I didn't live in their neighborhood, didn't walk the streets that they walk. And then able to be a part of affecting change was incredible.
Well, and every city is set up differently. You know, some have at-large districts, some have districts that are written with lines, right? In certain neighborhoods, was yours at-large for the whole city?
So we serve the whole city. Four of the six councilmen and women have to live in certain areas, but our constituents are the whole city because our particular city was less than 50,000. And actually, living in a city less than 50,000, you can many times have a bigger impact. You know, we see what's going on nationally, internationally, and even in our statewide politics. And I can sometimes feel like it's overwhelming. And I don't even know how to make a change and how to make a difference. And I don't always believe that my one vote is going to make a difference. But in local elections, in my particular elections, every 10 votes was a percentage point in the polls. So I thought, you mean, if I can find 10 more people today, I've changed the polling by 1%. I've shifted the results. And you only have to win by 50.1%. And you didn't take much. And I thought, it's worth it to get out there and engage with people, so.
Well, and in our state, guys, in Texas, and I know this kind of holds nationally. I mean, we're talking 6% to 8%, you know, if, if that's a good city, vote in their local government elections. In Texas here, we have one coming up, May 7th. And I know in Pennsylvania, they have one as two, one coming up as well. So we need to like be paying attention and figuring out who we need to vote for and really engage. So let's go to your mayoral race. Was that 2018 or 2019?
I think it was 2019.
Okay, 2019, which is the year after I ran for Congress, you're running for mayor. And I just remember thinking, I want to help Jamie. And I couldn't do anything but stand out at the polls for you on Election Day.
Which you did.
Which I did.
12 hours.
Yeah, 12 hours, that was fun. But talk about that race specifically and, and what compelled you to do that? And you lost unfortunately by only 200 votes. Talk to us a little bit about that experience and what you learned from that.
You know, running for city council almost then felt very comfortable. And I like to challenge myself to do something I've never done before. We had a long-term, very established mayor who'd been there for over 20 years. A godly man who had really invested in our community and kept us strong. So we were in a pivotal moment. I ended up running against a man that's actually was a friend. So it was a very amiable election. It wasn't, it didn't get nasty or anything like that. But we had different visions for the city, so we both got the opportunity to share those. Our local election was just after a lot of intensity nationally. So I think you saw some folks just say, I don't want to, I don't want to get involved. Just my neighborhood alone, we had 100 normal, always voters not show up for that election. So then, you know, you look back and say, I should have door knocked more, I should have done this. We definitely learned more from our losses than our wins, I think. And you have to say, what did I learn? And okay, Lord, what now? What do I have, what do you have for me to get to be? I was the first woman to run for mayor in our city. And I ran against the first African-American to ever run. So no matter what, it was a monumental election and a real new day for our city.
Well, and then you got involved, I recruited you to get involved with Christians Engaged because I, you know, I knew federal government. We had people on our board that knew state government. But I'm like, we need somebody that really has a passion for city government and that can inspire people. And I instantly thought of you, Jamie. But talk to us about, how do you talk to people about getting involved in city government? I know you've already covered a lot of that, but there's a lot of mundane things and a lot of rewarding things. What were some of the favorite things that you got to do in city government in all those years? And then what were some of the mundane things you're like, if I never have to do one of these things again, I will be happy?
Right, right.
Give us kind of the full breadth of what that looks like.
I enjoyed, I enjoyed the programming. I loved when we were able to see something happen that really brought smiles to kids and different events and moments, especially again, when those were family-friendly. I think the small things, one of the last things I ever did was make sure that one of the neighborhoods had new striping down their streets. It seems so simple and yet people were speeding because the lines weren't clear of how they, how they should slow down and different things like that.
And that was very, very important for those people in that community.
It was very important for those people, not for anyone else. But it was those simple things that literally changes the schedule of the street, striping machine that made a difference in people's lives. So I love that, I love that simply asking nonprofits to join in and picking up trash or just showing the love of Christ changed the face of the community in those moments. I think the most disappointing parts were when two people would be passionate about something and disagree, or when citizens would be passionate. And the passion had caused them to almost stop listening to the options of what could be there. And many times, we will take our national frustrations and express them locally. But your local politicians are very reachable. I've had people knock on my door. My goodness, they definitely find me and would find me in the grocery store or text me and call me. But, but they're very within reach. And so many times, we can get a lot more done through conversations, courageous conversations, than we have to by, you know, lobbying, lobbying something towards them over the airwaves or wherever we do, we get the opportunity to sit down. The challenge is there has to really be a lot of collaboration. I can't imagine what it's like to be in national politics. I think it's a lot more intense. I think it's nasty from what I hear.
Pretty nasty.
The stories that I hear of what's, how people are treated on different sides of the aisle breaks my heart. And locally, we're nonpartisan. And so what was a new day for me is although I've, I've been a registered Republican my whole life and always will continue, will continue to be as long as I plan to be, to actually work together with people that were of the Democratic Party or No Party or Libertarian or whatever, they saw themselves affiliated with and say, yes, but we have a drainage issue. So that house is flooding and let's get that fixed. And so I had the opportunity to learn how to find what we agreed on. That's a gift that you have locally that I think goes away, maybe even on the county level. It definitely, I think fades quickly as you, as you move up. So locally, we get this chance to maybe work together, which is even, maybe even a controversial topic because some people say, how can we work together? We have very different value systems. But on a local level, we can share values, which is a neat opportunity.
Well, and that's why we're featuring you in the Courageous Leaders series because some people don't understand that it almost takes more courage to get involved in a local government situation than it does nationally. Because I don't know about you, but I know when I was running, there was a whole bunch of rumor mills and text messages and all this crazy stuff going on. And I was running for Congress, but you know, even in a, in a mayoral election, those people are in your neighborhoods and are in churches next to you or are in your own church, right? And you're having to deal with that. It can be really hard on your soul, on your heart.
Your kids may go to school together with the same person you're running against. And so we have an opportunity to really exercise the fruits of the spirit. Many times, I was, I was so caught off guard one night as someone came to the citizens forum and they were literally yelling and screaming and they were a pastor. And I thought, no one wants, is gonna see the, for the other council members, maybe, maybe someone didn't know the Lord. What, what picture are they seeing in that moment? And what was sad is like, I know you have the tools, I know you know the word. So can we please sit down in that moment? I don't know if that is even possible on a national level to that same degree. I can't imagine the abuse that many times national and statewide politicians go through. The generalization statements, the rumors that are sent. It takes extra work. It's easy when you door knock to be salacious and say, don't vote for this person because of these things. This is the rumors I've heard. It's harder to say, I really want to prove to you I'm the person for the job. And then it's a harder choice for that voter to say, I'm going to choose a person, even if we may disagree in other ways, I believe you're the best person for this seat in this moment.
Okay, so let's talk through that. People are frustrated sometimes of how to vote in nonpartisan elections. So how do you pick a good leader in your city? How do you pick a good leader in your, your area for whether it's school board or your community college board of trustees or your cities? How do you pick a leader in a city?
I think you have to look at character. I think it is, people text me usually the day of the election and they'll say, who should I vote for?
Yeah.
Right? And, or you know, or I love, we have, I have the most amazing precinct chair and they send me, they send us all very informative information on all the elections. And it's so key and vital. But on a local level, you need to shake the hand and meet the person of the person you're going to vote for. You have the opportunity. They're showing up, I guarantee you, if there's a public event in the city during election season, they're going to be there. What kind of business do they run? Is it, is it someone that they want to do, you want to do business with? Because they're going to be running the business of your city. They're going to take your money and your tax dollars that you pay every time you pay your house note and they're going to use it and they're going to steward that money. How do they steward their own world? How do they steward their marriage? How do they steward their home? That's important. You have to, you have to look at those things because they have the opportunity to put money back in your pocket when they lower taxes, when they steward that, you know, prices are going up, right? There's things that have to get done. But the people sitting in those seats and the staff that they choose to run the city are going to be the ones that choose how your money is spent.
Well, and that's what Moses and, you know, Jethro, his father-in-law told him to put over leaders, over, you know, hundreds, over 50s, right? And get out of the business of operating in every place. Well, the founders gave us a gift in that they gave us the ability to have representative government, right? So what an honor it is to actually vote for our leaders. And specifically, guys, the reality is your city leaders affect your life more than who's in the White House. That's the truth. One of my friends, I tell this story all the time, you know, got really concerned about the tax rate in our community. So she started going and checking out the Dallas County Community College Board of Trustees meetings. Well, no one goes to those meetings. And she started documenting what was actually happening and how they were raising their, everyone's taxes, you know, a half a percent every year, a full percent every year. Well, that kept growing and no one was paying attention. So she ends up running for the, you know, Community College Board of Trustees. So you never know, you know, do some research on your city website. Look and see what's going on. Go to some local events. Think, you know, where is my talents? How could I use my business talents? Things that I know, ways that I could help my city? And then how do they get appointed to commissions and boards and all that stuff?
Many times, there's a process, there's usually an online process once a year where you fill out a form that says, I'm interested in these certain boards. On the school board level, you can get involved in whatever local schools you're a part of. And that's a huge way. And then you can run for a school board eventually. On the city level, serving on a board is important. Sitting down with a council member and saying, teach me about these boards. The first time I expressed interest to run, one of the council members called me because I actually would have been running against him. And, but he wasn't threatened. Instead, he said, I'm thrilled that you're interested. Tell me, tell me more about you and maybe I can actually find you somewhere to get involved.
That's great.
It was great. And it avoided, he avoided an opponent in that moment as well. But he was able to connect me and say, I think this is a board that you're really going to enjoy. Why don't you become a part of the process first before you come in and just see? Typically, it doesn't pay as well, it may not pay at all.
Yeah, most time it's volunteer.
Which I think is wonderful. And even if it does, it's not pound for pound, dollar for dollar worth the hours, which is good. Because it means you have to do it because you believe in it and because you love it. You have to find your passion. You have to find the things that really matter to you and how you can get involved in those areas.
Well, and a lot of people don't, yeah, most of these positions are not paid, they're volunteer. If you run, I remember during COVID, I was really burdened for all the little rural mayors around Texas that has said, oh, okay, I'll serve as mayor. And, you know, nobody else wanted to do it and they got elected. And then all of a sudden, they're dealing with incredible decisions that they could have never saw coming. And so, you know, these guys do it because they want to serve their community. You know, and we need to be vetting them. You can sit down with them, you can get their cell phone numbers, they're very accessible. If they aren't very accessible, you have to wonder, hmm, maybe I shouldn't vote for them. Maybe I shouldn't be supporting them. But for the most part, they are. And there's tons of ways for you can get involved. Also, a lot of cities, you know this Jamie, have like Leadership Garland, Leadership Cedar Hill programs where people can actually learn on a weekly basis or monthly basis about how city government works. I'm sure you've been.
They do, yeah. In South Dallas, it's called Leadership Southwest. And so that's a conglomeration of cities down there that work together because they partner with your EMS systems and your fire and police and all those different systems. So it's important to understand and know the workings of your city. I know every, most police groupings and police forces also have classes that you can take to learn more. And it's very easy for us to have a, to throw out opinions about CRT or how we feel about body cams or anything like that. But when you sit down with a school board member or you sit down with a police representative and say, tell me what it's like. Many, many police forces will let you ride out and literally see what it's like that every time you stop someone, you might be putting your own life in danger as well. All these things have a human face. And so many times, there aren't evil people trying to do terrible things. They're just people trying to make the decisions that they think is best. And they may not know what you know. And they need that opportunity to learn from you and you to learn from them.
And know these places are also vetting you. You know, you're in these classes or seminars or getting to know people. You know, they're checking out you, what kind of person are you? Could we really utilize you in the city? So know that walking in, that you're going to be vetted and you're vetting them, right? But there are so many opportunities, I think, in our cities that are totally overlooked. I want to highlight and then recap for you. Jamie and I wrote a couple of articles that are on our, our website and we're going to be recycling those as we get into the election season for city government. But one of them is how to, what are practical ways that you can be salt and light in your city? And another way is how to really vet and think about who to vote for in nonpartisan elections. So check those out. We're also developing in 2022, a full curriculum on how to be light and salt in our communities. So we're going to talk about city government, school boards, county government, all that fun stuff. And so if that's something you're really interested in, just be watching because we're going to produce that this year in 2022 and we're excited about that.
And Bunny, if I could just say one more thing, many of the food pantries, the unwed mothers homes, many of the shelters for abused women, those opportunities were many times created by amazing individuals that are looking to retire many times. And they need someone to step in and say, I want to care about these nonprofits in our city. So even serving on the boards of those nonprofits, your local food pantry, it doesn't need to be run by governments. There, I believe the body of Christ can step in and be solutions for people. But they need people that are willing to volunteer and willing to lead. And what does it look like to run these nonprofits in our world, in our generation?
That is so good, Jamie. We all need to be taking ownership somewhere of. And don't forget your local Chamber of Commerce's, guys. If every Christian leaves the Chamber of Commerce, what is going to happen to our world? So, you know, all these places are places where we can go in and make a huge difference. And I say this all the time, but you can walk into a place, start volunteering and a couple of years later, be the president or the leader of that organization. It's shocking, the doors that God will open for you if you go in with a humble and a heart for leadership and servant leadership, right, Jamie?
Absolutely, absolutely. And many times, there's a career opportunity there. And, or if you have a career opportunity somewhere else, the people that are going to write that recommendation letter are the ones that have watched you serve and they've seen your character and they've seen your heart. And if you don't know, just ask, ask someone, is there an opportunity? Go see how, what the votes were on the last election. Even in the upcoming elections, go check first and see how small the margin was in the last election. You will hopefully be very inspired to vote, but maybe even inspired to run as a result.
Yeah, in 2018, in my city, we had a three-person mayoral race and we only had 1.2% of the population show up, right? So a city of 250,000 people and only 5,400 people voted in our mayoral election. I mean, one church in our community in Garland, Texas could have taken that election. So number one, vote in every election. Vote for your city elections, they come up every year. So either in May, most of the time in Texas, or sometimes in November. But, and then get involved somewhere. Get involved somewhere and start serving somewhere. Again, we can't deal with every problem in the world. Walking with members of Congress for years, they can't even deal with every problem. They take one problem at a time. They take one problem at a time. So if we all as believers pick one space and make an impact, amazing what we can accomplish, right, Jamie?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, thank you so much for your time. Thank you for serving with Christians Engaged. And we're going to be out more in your communities talking about being light and salt in our cities in the years to come. So you guys stay tuned to that. And thank you, Jamie, for being here.
Thank you so much. Great time.